All right, it's seven thirty. This is a regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We have four people here tonight. On my far right is Allison and on her is Lloyd Hammond. On my left is Aaron Wolfe. John Martin, our other member, is unable to attend. The only thing we have in front of us tonight is Two Depot Square. And this is a continuance of the public hearing from October four? Third?
Six.
Six. One of those dates, two weeks ago. So this is, this is a continuation of the public hearing. Part of the reason there was continuation is lead agency, the planning board had the long form seeker and had not yet declared a deck. And because we were lead agency, we really couldn't take any actions at that time. So we, we held the public hearing open, saying that we really couldn't act. And we had a couple of things to look into. So we're going to continue the public hearing. Planning board has declared their name deck. One open issue is around parking, but I think we're going to deal with everything but parking to start with. And then we'll, we'll have a discussion around parking and what that means. So you have presented, but it wouldn't hurt to remind us.
Okay, and I do have...
Remind, remind Mr. Public here.
Do you want a presentation of the project or are you...
You know, I wouldn't mind it, a quick one, because I know nothing about this.
No problem.
Well, it's, it's a slot in the corner.
What?
It's a slot in the corner.
Oh, yeah, you know, I know that.
Before I start that, I'll just give you, we've got one more.
Oh, one more. Okay.
And this is, I did an updated zoning performance worksheet. Based on what we discussed the last time, so I'll go over that after I do a quick presentation.
Absolutely.
There are eight copies there.
Thank you.
Seven more. It's okay. Okay. Okay, so, for the benefit of the public, just a recap of the project.
Okay, and that's fine, because I was myself trying to remind of all the issues in front of us.
Okay. My name's Karen Parks. I'm here representing Catherine Blanch, who is the owner of Two Depot Square. Two Depot Square, for anyone who isn't familiar, is at the foot of Main Street, at the intersection of Depot Square and Main Street, across from the Depot Restaurant. The owner who has owned the property since the spring would like to do some renovations to the property. And her proposal is to convert what is now an existing three-family, multi-family residence into four dwellings, all within the existing footprint of the building. There is one open covered porch area under a second stor- under a portion of the second story. Let's propose to be enclosed as part of the project. Have the whole space, but the overall footprint of the building, of the actual dwelling space will not change. There's also one deck on the north end of the structure, which is in somewhat a bit of disrepair. That would need to be replaced. And going so, we'd like to expand the size of that in length by about four and a half feet. So this is a site plan, general, Main Street, Depot Square. This is the portion of the building that's an existing open patio under second story being closed, and the deck of the building is being replaced.
Yeah.
Also, in addition to the work I just described, as part of some improvements to the site, we'll be doing some landscaping work, including a new fence and a proposed pergola, which is also part of this application. So the application before the zoning board is to address a number of variances. Setback variances to all, from all property lines. This is a corner lot, so we have two front yards, one on Depot Square and one on Main Street, both requiring forty-foot setbacks. And we have one rear yard, which has been defined as the east property line, opposite Depot Square, which would have a ten, ten-foot rear yard requirement. And we have one side yard property line, which is defined as the north property line, which would require a five-foot side yard. Because of the changes we're proposing, the village attorney has advised that all pre-existing non-conforming issues be brought up to date and variances be addressed. So in the new zoning conformance worksheet, which I've just submitted to you, I've addressed all of those setback issues, as have been defined by the village attorney. And then I broke out several scenarios for lot coverage, because I know there was some clarification that your board was going to seek in terms of what is considered a structure that would fall under lot coverage. So should I just start from the beginning and go through the setbacks?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So first of all, of course, the lot is pre-existing at 6,523 square feet. And, and also, this is in a B1 general business district, which I don't think I mentioned before. So the, the minimum lot area in that district is 10,000 square feet. Our lot obviously preexists, so the variance we would be requesting would be 3,477 square feet. Okay. For the front yard at Depot Square, we have an existing garage with an existing setback of 4.6 feet. Again, here, we're required to have a forty-foot front yard setback. The existing garage is not proposed to change, so that setback would remain at 4.6 feet. The variance being requested for the garage is 35.4 feet. We are also proposing a pergola on the site, and that is new. It's not constructed yet, so the variance for that, the distance to the property line would be three foot, five inches, or 3.42 feet. I'm not sure which you'd like to refer to, so.
Points, points are good, I like points.
Okay, so with a forty-foot setback requirement, we're looking for a variance of thirty-five, thirty-six point five eight feet for the pergola from Depot Square.
I appreciate the translation.
Okay. So then we have a front yard along Main Street, again, requiring a forty-foot setback. We have an existing building that is point three feet away. That will not change. So with that existing distance, we're looking for a setback of 39.7 feet. And then the proposed pergola also falls within that front yard setback. It's proposed to be nineteen feet from the property line, so we're requesting a variance of twenty-one feet. Okay, to move on?
Yeah, yeah.
At the rear property line, which is the east property line, again, we have the existing building. Its closest point being three point eight feet from the rear property line, with a ten-foot setback requirement, we are requesting a variance of six point two feet. And then at the side property, which is the north property line, we have an existing building point one feet from the property line. That's not proposed to change, so we'd be, and that's a five-foot setback requirement, so we're looking for a variance of four point nine feet. Stories of the building, we have two and a half. That will not change. That's the allowed number of stories, so there's no variance requested there. The height of the building is approximately twenty-five feet. We're allowed thirty-five feet, so there's no variance requested there. Okay, then we get into lot coverage. So what I've done here, we have a, a lot coverage of thirty-five percent allowed in the B1 district. So what I've done here is break down the various components of lot coverage, and I didn't total them up. I figured, depending on what the board is requiring us to cover, we can do the math and figure out the variance.
That's fine.
Okay, so our principal building is 2,970 square, seventy-four square feet, plus or minus. There are no covered porches, per se. We do have a covered patio that's proposed to be enclosed, however, that is covered by second floor area, so that's included in your total building square footage.
So that's, that's under prin- principal buildings?
Correct. We have an accessory building number one, which is a shed. That's sixty-four square feet. Accessory building number two, I wasn't sure if this would fall into that or not. There is a stone gazebo with a well under it. It has a roof. It's open to the air, but I am including it, and then you can determine whether or not that should be part of the coverage.
Is the...
I don't know if I have, I do have a picture of it.
Is the open well, is that on your site plan?
It is, yes.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, I see it. It's, it's next to the garage.
Thank you.
And, well, this is kind of a picture of it. So it, it's a stone structure. It has a stone or concrete roof with stone on it. So I just want to make sure we're covering everything that could possibly be addressed here. Okay, then, open and uncovered decks, including stairs, currently encompass twenty, 234.5 square feet. With the expansion of the deck at the north end of the building, that would actually increase to 372 square feet.
But it's uncovered.
Right, correct. And then we have the pergola, which is 196 square feet.
Which is, it's, it is three percent of the lot?
Um...
Or, I'm just reading across, and I was just, and then...
Yeah, I'll check my math. I'm pretty sure, yeah.
It seems big, but...
It does seem big, but...
Yeah, I guess three percent.
Seven, six, seven, six, that's what it's talking about. Equals, yes, three percent.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so, great, so I've calculated the percent of lot, lot coverage for each of those components. And depending on what the board is going to consider for lot coverage, we can add those up, determine what our total coverage will be.
Right. And then go from there.
And then I've also, I know we're not addressing parking, but I do, did some parking things we can talk about in a bit. I don't know if we want to cover the lot coverage first.
I, I, I think, I think we'll address area variances.
Okay.
And, and then kind of walk through that in terms of our understanding and what they mean. And then, because we, I mean, we did get a letter from John first.
Right.
It's unclear. So we need John, John Martin to add some clarity to this.
Okay. So in terms, just a quick summary about the area variances.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, obviously, the variances seem quite extreme, however, the building is existing. We're not increasing the size of the footprint. The only newly proposed structure on the property is the open pergola. So, you know, we hope that the board, as we feel, would, would recognize that the impact of a site and neighbors is, is not going to be a negative impact. But in fact, we feel it would be positive in terms of the changes and improvements on the site.
So, so the only true, I mean, pergola aside, the only true increase in footprint is that, is the deck?
The deck, correct, correct. And that increase was thirty-seven and a half square feet. It's currently eight feet long, and it will be twelve and a half feet long.
Which is, would make the variance greater for that particular area.
Correct. It is, however.
However?
Yeah. Actually, you know, what, what I realized is that deck sits entirely over an existing garage. So while, actually, while I added that into the square footage for decks, that deck sits over the garage, which is part of the principal building square footage. So technically, we're not covering any more of the lot. It's kind of a double thing.
It's already on top.
Yeah.
It's already on top, yeah.
Okay, so, so you're not, technically, you're not increasing...
You're not increasing it, because he's just explaining it on the roof, right? That's what we're doing.
Any, any footprint, okay.
And is it true that the unco- open and uncovered decks do not apply, or they do?
Uh, no.
But only just setback?
Right, only if, if you put a roof over it, then it's covered. So we can basically strike that, that five percent off.
Okay.
So that will, that will not be included.
Okay.
I don't think there's any discussion around that.
No, I understand that, yeah.
He's asking us to verify the variances that are there already. I've got that letter.
He's asking us basically to, to give variances for things that have been grandfathered.
Right.
Yeah.
Just to make it updated.
To make it updated, so that, that...
Down the road.
Down the road.
So that's what I'm kind of like, I'm reading, I say, wait, I mean, everything is here.
Yeah.
They're not asking for nothing, because it's already there.
With the exception of the pergola, which is...
The question originated with, with parking, and that's the reason.
Yeah, so, okay, I missed.
Anyway, no, that's all right. I mean, I, I, I have not had a lot of time to look at this, so I'm quite open to other reads on this.
You know what, I read it, and I'm saying, okay, it's here, how can we not?
Right.
Granted.
Right, okay.
Covering all bases, covering up.
Yeah, in this case, it's not of the owner's undoing either. You know, this is a, this is a fair case, and it's not the owner's doing, they need the variance.
Right.
It's not self-imposed.
The only, the only new structure...
Is the pergola.
Is the famous pergola, and what is it? Yeah.
Do you have, we have a further idea of what it is?
Yeah, it's, it's an open roof thing.
Open roof thing.
It is right here.
Well, is it help...
We can ask our man from the public here, he can give us, you know, what does he think?
It can be a part of a building.
I mean, as a structure, it has, it is requiring a building permit.
Right.
I don't know if that has any bearing on it, but...
But just to let the public know, last week, we were struggling with pergola and its definition in the current code. There's nothing that truly covers pergola, but yet, it doesn't seem to be an accessory building. And so we were struggling with what is it in terms of the code? And the doesn't open pergola with just basically crosshatches, considered, is that considered coverage?
Well, is, isn't the code say that you can't have a, any, a structure in the, in a yard, and then you go to the definition of structure in the code? Does it, we have a definition of structure?
No, and that's, that's the problem. We don't.
Don't? That's not a covered, it's, it's a slot. We don't have a definition of structure.
We talked about accessory buildings, but not uncovered structures.
Structures.
Structure, any combination of materials or anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires location on the ground or attachment of something having a location on the ground. I just thought...
So it's a structure, but...
It is a structure.
It's a structure.
It's a structure.
So, so you need a variance. I mean, I would, I would...
No, that's all right.
I'm just the public here.
I, I know, but I'm...
My opinion is good.
Yeah, you can go, that's good.
We appreciate your opinion.
You can point us to the right section, right there.
It's the definition section.
Right. And I would just also add, also in the definition section, under coverage, it says, that percentage of the plot or lot area covered by the building area.
Oh.
So is there a difference between building and structure?
And structure, yeah.
So like, clearly, the pergola is a structure. A building is any structure having a roof supported by columns or by wood and intended for the shelter, housing, or enclosure of persons, animals, or chattel.
What is the little bench, you know, the little concrete bench that's on the sidewalk? I love that.
I love that, too.
I hope it's defined in the, I hope it's saved.
So, so a structure is defined, but it's, but then, so a structure is not included in lot coverage. A structure that isn't a building is not included in lot coverage.
This doesn't have a roof, it's a slot.
It depends on whether a roof on it, according to our code.
Right, it doesn't have a roof on it.
Or is it intended for shelter, housing?
All right, for example, you want to put a sculpture there. What if it wasn't a pergola?
Right.
What if it was a, you know, a, a steel structure or a wooden structure?
This is, this is really...
And are the slats considered a roof, or is the fact that it's open? I would say it's not if it's not providing shelter.
It's not providing shelter.
Having locations.
Are you going to put, what answer, do you have to put...
I think usually what happens in codes, and we don't have it in our code, but I know we're looking at it in the code update committee, is there's a definite, usually you give a definition for the minimum size of a structure or thing that would be, that would trigger it being a, considered something that would be occupying a yard. For instance, you don't want to have to go to get a variance for a doghouse, okay? So even though nobody uses doggies anymore, but, so the codes usually give like a, I guess, like a length, a width, a height, and if those three dimensions total more than a certain number, it's a, it's something that you got to deal with. If it's less, then you don't, it's not considered permitting or anything. And it, it covers things like doghouses. Or a sculpture.
A sculpture. I, I did a little bit of non-conclusive research, and I found one dimension in that the way you're describing was 125 square feet. So this is above that. I think what we need to do is, is define what it is as a pergola, since we don't have a definition of pergola. And several, several zoning codes I've found did define pergola. And, you know, what we have on the, on the plan is totally a pergola. So I think if we, you know...
But, but we're not, we're not in a position to, to define it.
Well, we can, we can...
We can interpret it.
We can't define it for the code, but we can...
You can define it for the definition of a yard. Yard, front, rear, side, it says, open, unoccupied space. The pergola is going to be occupied. I mean, the pergola in itself is something that will be occupied.
Okay.
So you could even, you don't even have to define pergola. You can just go to the, the definition of yards, and they say they are open and unoccupied space. And if you're putting a pergola in it, there's going to be people sitting in it, this and the other.
It's going to be occupied space.
That's occupied.
But it's not a yard, though.
I would say. But it's in the yard.
You got three definitions of yard here. You got a yard...
This is, it's in the definitions for, for yards.
You got front yard, rear and center.
And then Carolyn's saying, I haven't seen the site plan, but she's saying that a portion of the pergola is in a front yard.
Right.
And it says here, an open, unoccupied space on the same lot as the building, between the front line of the building and the front line of the lot, and extending the lot, extending the full width of the lot. That's the front yard. This is the yard, unoccupied space, open to the sky, on the same lot as a building or structure. So it does define front, rear, and side. So this is the front, and there's the definition of a front yard.
But yet...
But they still have to define...
But along, right, along, along his logic, that, that yard is going to be occupied because I've put a structure in which people are going to gather.
Right. So clearly, there's no question we need variances to the, to the yard requirements. That, that's not a question. I think the question is, is the pergola defined as a building or a structure in terms of lot coverage?
Well, it can be a building, because a building is any structure having a roof supported by columns or by wood and intended for the shelter, housing, or enclosure of persons, animals, or...
Correct.
Whatever chattel is. And then a structure is different. A structure says here, any combination of materials or anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires a location on the ground...
Right.
Or attachment to something having location on the ground.
So it's clearly...
So it's not a building.
Right, it's clearly a structure.
It's clearly a structure.
Right.
On a front yard.
Right. So it would seem like we would need yard variances, but not, not coverage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would, I would say we need to address the yard variances for that.
On the code update, are they going to do a pergola? I mean, are they going to do changes and stuff like that, so, because you're going to run into this again.
Well, I think one of the reasons why I came tonight is because I was interested in some of the issues that were coming up, that I'm hearing coming up out of this. So I think that that's one thing we'll look at, is defining, we're adding to the definitions, and one would be a pergola. And it's a good, that's a really good question for ZBA. Is a pergola count for lot coverage? Because it falls in the gray area.
Yeah, because it's not a roof.
It's not a roof, but there is kind of a cover. So it's, but it certainly isn't enough to stop, you know, it's not a roof. So how do you...
But you wouldn't want the whole yard covered by a pergola.
No, right.
Even, so it's got, it does count for some area.
So there's something there. So that's a great, that's, that's why ZBA is there, to, to go between. And so I guess that's something that we, you know, maybe we would look at in terms of...
So we can't, we can't obviously make a permanent definition of a pergola.
No.
But what we can do is limit, limit the variance that we grant to a certain type of thing. So we could say, we grant this variance, noting that this only a pergola, which we are calling this...
Yeah.
...would ever be built there, so it doesn't become a shed or something.
Change the structure.
Yeah, we can, we can do that, and we can say, this structure, which in this instance, we're calling a pergola, and this is how we're going to deal with it. So we can, yeah.
So as a condition of approval, you would define it?
Make sure it remains a pergola, right.
For, you know, the life of the property, not the owner.
How many people fit in this pergola?
How many what?
Does it matter? How many people fit in the pergola?
Depends how big you make them.
Right, it's, the pergola is a fourteen-foot by fourteen-foot structure.
There's not even very many people.
No, I mean, maybe a half a dozen considered...
But there's eleven by twelve, too, because you go to Lowe's, there's one over there, ten by twelve. There's like ten different sizes of pergolas, so it's going to vary.
Right.
From whatever you want to buy, whatever you want to make. You know, there's, and there, you know, it's one of those...
Oh, no, I just meant here, not, not there.
Oh, how big is this one here?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I just was, I, I'm just trying, because I live on the block. I was just imagining how many people are going to fit on this particular pergola.
Can I, can I have your, we don't have a secretary tonight, but we, we are audio recording. Could you give, give us...
My name is Jane Timm.
Excuse me?
My name is Jane Timm, and I own the building at 50 Main Street.
Oh, the white building, oh, Beju.
The Beju, that's why I'm here, because it's my block, my block.
Yeah. No, that's, that's fine.
My bench, my block.
Right.
And...
And how do you spell your last name?
T-I-M-M.
Okay, thank you. Here, just for the record?
It's okay.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate, we appreciate the comments.
So this is the pergola.
Oh, I see, that's the pergola, right, thank you. Sure. There's not even very many people, just sixteen people, probably.
You have a, a bench or something, underneath it, a couple of benches?
Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
And just for the record, because I, I know my camera can't swing around, Donald McDonald is in the audience.
Yeah.
From B Street.
Ten B Street Colts.
Ten B Street Colts, I think.
Ms. Timm's son, Ethan, is on our code update committee.
Uh-huh.
Oh.
Thank the Lord.
You're not completely abandoned, huh?
So there were, there were a couple of other things that came to mind as I was looking, looking at how to account for the pergola. And one is that we can't have an accessory building in the front yard.
I think you're...
But if we don't call this an accessory building, then it's not a problem.
It's not a building.
The other thing is that... The other thing is that, um, it's a corner, it's a, it's a structure on the corner, so there is.
Yeah, there's a bench in front of us.
A rule about line of sight for roads. Um, but I don't think this applies, because it's above, above the grade.
Above grade. And.
You see the side one there, too?
Mm-hmm. It's a side, it's a side one. And currently, there's six, ten on those sides.
Right.
Yeah, so it's an improvement.
Thank you.
In terms of line of sight.
As long as we don't, um, uh, as long as we don't think it's an instruction division, we don't have to deal with it.
To people making terms. And it's.
Yeah, it's.
It's open, and, and just for reference now, there is currently a six-foot sol- high solid stockade fence at that corner.
Right.
Which is going to be removed and replaced with an open, um, metal fence. And pergola is an open structure with four columns that you can visually see through. So the visibility through the corner of the property is gonna be improved upon greatly.
I kinda, I don't really think the visibility is, is that much of an issue, because when you're coming out of the depot.
Not for drivers, right.
You're coming out of the depot over here.
Right.
That's over there. You're coming this way, the pergola's over there.
Right.
And even people coming down, you're coming down way over here, because it's that far back. So I don't even think the line of sight is.
Yeah, it's not, it's not an issue.
It's an issue. It's not like the, the issue we had with the condos down the bottom of Main Street. We had the line of sight from around a corner. Remember that deal we had?
Yeah.
For this item?
Yeah, um, but I.
If anything, the wall itself would be, that's not up to discussion.
I just applaud the fact that the opaque fence is being taken away and something going through.
Yeah, me, too.
Right.
But that is, that, that would, that's the one thing about the property that's always bothered me, that it's so opaque.
Right.
In the middle of downtown, and so that I applaud.
Yeah, this is totally, totally.
I'm vast improvement.
Oh, yeah. See through. Yeah. Okay. What else you got?
I just wanna quickly, I don't know if you communicated with the building inspector, but I did regarding the fence. There was some discussion at the last time, and, um, he basically said that, um, I'm just gonna pull out my notes.
Just to bring the public up to speed, there, the fence is on a, on a raised wall, it is forty-two inches, and if we were to go strictly with the fence law, we, that, that forty-two inch fence would be over height, but I'll let you finish.
Um, so I spoke with Bill Bujerisky about that, and, um, he said the building department has re-sarch, searched that with the village attorney, and the fencing code applies to its supplemental regulations in residential districts that defines that height. So therefore, there is no variance required for the fence. Um, and then in terms of the building height, the, the height of the, the fence is required because of the height of the grade within the retaining wall. Um, so for a safety issue by code, the height, um, so nobody falls off, will be the forty-two inches above grade.
So building code requires some kind of structure so you can't walk off the wall that is, you know, raised off, you know, because the ground behind the wall is.
The sidewalk in the side of the wall is below.
Yeah.
The building code says twenty-four inches or, or higher, you need to have a guard, called a guardrail, which in this case would be the fence. But I thought that we, I thought that we did, we went through this on Kathleen Foley's fence, because he had the wall on the top, and we actually generated a new definition. We defined that issue.
Mm-hmm.
That you had to take it, you had to measure from the highest, from the high side of a drop like that, but it never made it into the code, and I don't know why.
We also did it on High Street. You remember on High Street? The corner house?
The corner house.
Put the fence on top of the, on top of the concrete wall.
Because we.
Oh, my God. That, well, that was, that was Dick Turner's high point.
And.
With the chainsaw.
Chainsaw. Yeah, we've had that a couple of issues.
May, may rest in peace, Dick.
But.
Will there be children living there? There are now, but there have been through the years.
There certainly could be. I mean, but it's like, be a multifamily dwelling, and I would imagine that somebody with children would.
But a forty-two inch fence isn't, is really enough to.
Keep it, yeah.
Four feet keep a kid out.
Keep kids from falling out.
Keep falling, keep a kid from falling out.
Or adults from falling off.
Yeah. For anybody falling off the wall.
If it's in the code, that's required.
Forty-two inch high in a commercial, which would be a commercial district.
Right.
It would have to be forty, yeah, that's right. It's not residential, so.
So it's, it's, it's well within code, so, you know, that's.
And it's.
Safety issue is being addressed with the height. So.
So.
He's right, that's one of the things on the code update committee, that it does. And we've been through this issue with the, the fence was only in the supplementary for the residential district, and what are you doing in commercial? And that's something we're gonna look at, too. But we've all agreed that the whole fence issue is like the third rail of coated coating, you know, in this village, so.
And you're gonna fix it, you're gonna fix it all.
I've been there, done that.
Accessory buildings.
Ethan's gonna do it. Ethan stepped up. Actually, he did. I was like, good.
Good, good.
Okay.
All right, so basically, um, the variances we are, are looking at are variances that, for the most part, just as a general statement, exist.
We don't have to do it one by one, do we? I think it's crazy to do one by one, I think we should.
We can, let's group, what we should do is group together the ones that are pre-existing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Which, which is.
All these here.
Which is most of it.
I'm gonna say which is, you know, ninety percent, except, except for the pergola.
Right.
The pergola, the pergola basically is what triggers new variances.
Right.
Right.
Everything else is existing.
Right.
So what do you, I mean, we shouldn't have to go through.
Well, the parking, but that's a different.
Yeah, but I mean, let's go through these here, one.
Well, I agree, let's group, group as many as we can.
Yeah, and then just do that and leave the pergola out.
Look who's here.
Oh, now we have to go through this all.
You don't have to go through it again.
We'll give you air plugs.
Good.
But no, I mean, he's right, let's do one, do all of them, and do the pergola separately.
Well, I mean, the decision's gonna be based on all these variances, and I, I basically will, in the decision, I'm not saying we have to discuss them one by one.
But you'll have to write it that way.
Yeah, I, and, and thank you for this chart.
How you lay it out.
Because basically, she has defined, you know, the variance is, you know, thirty-five feet, the variance is, you know, twenty-one feet, the variance is. So she's defined all of that, and, um, I mean, is, I mean, because we are, so I don't think we need to go through all at, at a single swoop. I mean, let's, let's talk about the variances, just discuss the variances for the pergola. Any additional discussion around that?
We're gonna do it as a yard, right?
As a side, as a front yard setback.
Front yard setback. Because there's no.
Two, two front yards.
Two front yards.
Two front yards.
Yeah, it's, it's on both sides, in both sides.
Yeah, because it's. Two front yard setbacks.
So it's a setback.
A variance on both sides, yeah.
A variance on both sides. And does it trigger lot coverage? I mean, I, I'm looking for opinions here.
Does it trigger lot coverage?
I don't think it does.
No.
I don't see that it triggered because of.
Pergola?
You can count, you can.
Like for an area variance?
Yes.
As opposed to a setback?
No, no, just, just, just a lot coverage. In other words, are we considering the pergola as part of lot coverage?
Percentage-wise?
It's only three point zero one.
It's here, John, right here.
No, no, I hear what you're saying, I know what, I know what you're saying, but.
And the definitions say, you, you look at buildings to look at, at lot coverage, and a building is defined as something with a roof that provides shelter to people, animals, or chattel, and this is something without a roof. So it's a structure, but not a building.
Right.
Yeah, it's not an accessory building.
No.
It's not a building.
It doesn't really necessarily fall within the definition, the code definition.
Right, of a building.
Okay, so is it, it, basically, and again, we'll cover this in more detail in the decision, but the basic take on this is pergola will trigger setbacks.
But not.
But not lot coverage.
Not lot coverage.
So basically, lot coverage at this point in time is the principal building and the two accessory buildings, and the percentages that you have listed there, not.
Not the pergola.
And what she did is she broke out lot coverage.
I see that.
And, and, but she didn't total it, because this is very discussion.
Yes.
So it's the forty-five point five nine percent plus point nine eight percent plus point five nine percent, which is a total of?
Forty-seven point one six, but somebody can double check my.
Now we trust your calculator, calculator.
I'll do it again.
Do that again till I write it down, let's see. And this is not gonna be covered, this is, this is.
Right, right, so that's, so it's just boom, boom, boom.
This is the one that's over the garage.
Yeah.
So this is gonna be marked down.
Yeah, this goes in, yeah.
This one here.
And because it's not covered as well.
Yeah, that, that doesn't count.
That's not gonna count. So would you say that's?
Forty-seven point one six.
Right.
Decided does not account for the expansion of the deck as an increase in coverage.
Forty-seven what, one six?
Oh, one six.
So I guess if our allowed coverage is thirty-five, that would mean we're asking for a variance of twelve point one six.
Twelve point one six.
This, this increase, we're not gonna.
Yeah, because it's sitting.
Right, we're not gonna stand it at the top.
And what, and what's that in, in total square feet?
Total square feet?
Yeah, just, I mean, just.
Um, spare with me a minute.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So what's suggested around that?
Three thousand seventy-six point five.
I meant what the structure can mean to the definition.
No, no, no. No questions. It's a.
Yeah.
Just kind of. Another point, it's clearly, well, it's not probably made that it's made as that is, um, not gonna carry on as a lot coverage, not considered as a, yeah, sure.
Right.
This is a, we need to state, sure, it's, 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 it's considered.
Right. So this, I think, at this point in time, but just to touch on this, and it'll decide our next steps, is, is the parking. Okay, so I think, I think we're all, we're all on the same page in terms of defining what those variances are. And, and we've, you know, basically handled the pergola, so let's just step to parking for a moment. I have received nothing from planning in terms of their, um, dealing with parking, and I had a quick discussion with Matt in Foodtown, and it, he said he was gonna write me, and he didn't. It's, it's being referred to the Coltspring Board of Trustees. I'm trying in my head, yet, the email from John First, I mean, he, he does say, yes, we are dealing with the current variances, but the question was parking, and it sounded like, was my take, and I hope I'm wrong, that, John, you saw that email from John First?
Yeah, I have it right here.
Okay. The question was parking, but he did say, and then this is Karen's approach, that we're, we're looking at all the existing, even though a lot of these are quote-unquote grandfathered, we're treating them as all brand-new variances. So that's why, you know, we're just basically, like, somebody had dropped this house onto the lot, you know.
So, so, so in essence, you're just really defining what you currently have, just for the record?
And for the record, and for, you know, the property that, you know, village, you know, agrees that, you know, if we give them the variances, if we grant them, that they're okay with the structure as it sits.
Other than that, I think in granting the variances, you can reference the fact that they were pre-existing, they were pre-existing.
Oh, yeah, we can say.
In the variance.
Absolutely, we can reference that they are pre-existing. But by us taking this action, it's kind of, you know, it, it's more than just, well, it's pre-existing grandfathered, which is.
Right.
Much looser, and this is a much tighter.
Yep.
For their benefit, solution to, you know, moving forward and, and making sure that if, if granted, there's not gonna be, you know.
At least from the zoning board, yeah.
Right, from the zoning board, or from neighbors, or from whatever else, that, that, you know, we've looked at it and we've said, okay. So.
There really is a parking problem on Lower Main Street. No doubt about it. There are people who park and get on the train on the days that the policemen are not ticketing. There are the two, uh, two hours for the limits for the depot, which is fair. And then the building of Rock Street, on Stone Street, is gonna have something, I don't know what it's gonna have, and there are already, everybody has a car. Plus the businesses, all of us businesses need people to drive up and do business. I mean, it's, it's really a problem. I mean, I know that parking, my late husband used to say, when we came here in the city, he said parking was a problem there. Still a problem.
Absolutely.
Five families will be.
It's four apartments, right?
Four families.
Four.
Four families. See, it won't be as bad. I say that.
Some people don't have cars, I mean, some people just take the train.
Right. No, it's, it was, all of that is, you know, valid, valid and true statements, absolutely.
I know, I know that everybody knows that, actually.
But it never, it never hurts to remind us.
Doesn't John, didn't John First say that the code requires each, two parking spaces for each dwelling, not one? So we're talking about ensuring eight space, four spaces, not just, because we have, we're, you know, we've got four here which are not fully accessible.
Right.
Because you've got three lined, you know, three lined up. So what, you know, what, what does this count as? Does it count as four or does it count as two?
I think three. The general feedback from the planning board was that the fourth space deep within the garage was not really viable just because of access. But that the second space could be justified because there are several, um, residential sites within the village which have tandem parking and a narrow driveway, so they could, at least it's, it seemed, I don't want to, you know, answer for them, but it seemed at the meeting that they could wrap their heads around, you know, this being a viable space, this not. So we're really talking about three spaces on site. One of the things that, if we're talking, I, I feel like there are two parts to the parking issue and if we're bringing everything up to code via variances, the three spaces within the garage are undersized and at the very least I would, you know, appreciate that being addressed as a variance through this board, even if the number of spaces isn't currently addressed. So that's what I've broken down at the bottom of that zoning conformance chart, is the size of each of those spaces. And space number four, you know, if we're not really considering that, we could just strike that from the, you know, the conversation. Space number four is the deepest space within the garage. So, so we have a few issues. First of all, the shortage of spaces in general, and then the spaces within the garage are smaller than the defined space in the code.
The, um, the examples that the planning board cited for, um, cars that were, um, behind each other, were, were those multifamily?
They didn't cite examples, um, you know, we talked about this because I'd been presenting the four cars in the garage, the spaces that we have, and there was discussion about, well, you know, nobody likes to park, you know, front to back. And then one of the members said, well, but realistically for one family in a multi-dwelling, it's not unreasonable for one family to park two cars. You wouldn't necessarily have two different residents parking front to back. And there was no final conclusion because the planning board did not vote or like rule on that. But the other members present seemed to acknowledge that that was a fair consideration. So that's all I can really say about how that unfolded.
So by that, they're saying that the two cars, that the tandem parking would be in the same household. So you really only have, if you're going to go from, right now you only have two apartments covered out of the three that exist and you would only have two of four if you went to four.
Right, so ultimately we have three spaces on the site and we need a variance for five additional spaces.
Well, that's, I mean, we can't know what, which of the tenants of the building, of the dwelling units are going to own cars. So they could be, I mean, they may not be in the same family.
Right, but, 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 but the, the planning board was talking about the feasibility really is when you have the two cars in tandem owned in the same household.
Right, but we can't, we can't promise that.
We can't, no, we can't promise that, so where does that leave us? We have, then we need a variance for six spaces.
Well, for six?
Because if you, if you can't be assured that the two cars in that space would be in a, in the same household.
The, and the code says that the parking space has to have direct access.
Right.
Right.
Which the third one doesn't.
Right, so then you do need six.
Right. Or five and a variance for the direct access.
Right, but it's not, it's not clear to me that we've been asked to deal with the parking, so.
So how do we, I thought, I read John's email to bounce it to us, but.
That was my take on it, but I don't trust my, I don't trust my take on it. That's why, that's why, yes.
You know, if you grant, again, if you were to grant the variance and we look at all this and we think, it's, it's.
One trustee's.
In the way that we see it being acceptable, we can all, we can condition it also on the final approval of.
Parking.
Well, how do we determine parking, there's no freaking parking anywhere.
Well, that's not ours, it's supposed to be the village. That's a thing.
It's up to the village. I mean, we, I mean, we could, we so deemed could grant a variance.
Yeah.
Would it be a wise move? Probably not. But we're, we're in a position that we're allowed to grant variances. If, if you don't have enough parking space, we can grant a variance.
But we can also do it, you know, especially with the number of spaces we're talking about, to condition it on whether or not it gets final approval, you know, by the trustees or the planning board, whoever would be voting on it eventually.
But you can make a recommendation that the trustees agree to this. Like you can't, we can't, why would, why would we condition a?
Condition on, on.
Approval by the.
Of, of parking or of the variances in general?
No, the, the parking variances.
Of the parking variances, okay.
Because is there a concern here that the village in the end would make a decision on really what the available spaces in town here?
So I can maybe shed some light on that.
Go ahead.
I spoke with John First today about this and I think honestly he was forwarding this to you to keep you informed, you know, as, as far as the total application for the property. Because I think the, the way the process is unfolding right now is we have the application before the planning board and ultimately we're looking for a recommendation to the village board to grant a parking waiver. So that, that, that would then really negate the need for a variance.
Right, absolutely, I mean, I, I think you all agree with that.
Because I think this is a substantial issue with, with the number of spaces that we're talking about. I think it's way beyond our purview and considering the constricted, uh, you know, area that we have in this, uh, town, especially around the shops, I, I think it's like really beyond.
It's beyond us because the village code is nineteen sixty when one car was in a garage.
But this is also substantial.
Yeah.
This is not just one space type issue.
No, and it's going to be, it's going to be, it's an issue everywhere in a village, no matter where you go, it's going to be an issue. I mean, the restaurants is an issue, you've got to have suddenly parking spots for tables. So if I want to open up a restaurant, I can't open a restaurant because there's no parking in Colspring? Where are they going to do, where are they going?
I think this is a universal problem for the village.
Look at your Bella Yellis down or wherever the hell it is.
Right.
Where are they going to park? And they live, the bear place up there.
When you think about it, I mean, the village board is the one who writes the code.
Yeah.
And so on and so forth, and I think when you get this big of an issue, that's a lot of spaces into this kind of an area. I, I think that it should go really to the village to decide whether there's a waiver. Well, I mean.
And I think.
Don't, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, the, the village board grants varying, you can apply to the village board, if you're a restaurant and you want to, you don't have, you know, you're changing the use on Main Street from a store, like a toy store to a restaurant, and you don't have the parking spaces required for your table count, you can go to the village board and get a waiver. And they did it for Sky Baby, they've done it for a number of places on Main, on, in the B one on Main Street. And you end up at the village board and they are the ones that grant the variances from all the parking.
Especially for the waiver issue.
So it's a waiver, it's a waiver.
Well, they charge the annual fee.
It could be, it could be that that, this is a waiver issue.
So, so.
Does anybody have a feel, I mean?
I get, it's, it's a waiver issue as to maybe the five or the six spaces, okay? But as to the two or three, or the, as to the one or, you know, I mean, the two or three spaces that are made, we can say something about that.
Well, we can, we can grant the waiver as to the, the non-conforming sides.
The, the variance.
Uh, yeah.
The variance as to the non-conforming sides.
As to the non-conforming sides of the two existing spaces.
Certain of these spaces, but as far as the additional number of spaces that are needed off, for our street parking, uh, we, we just can't. I don't think we should, we should go there.
Right. And I think the way I under, I understand, if for example the village board were to deny the waiver, I think we have the right as an applicant, property owner, to come back to you and apply for a variance to take our chances with your board. We may have the same outcome, but I think that's why you're being, you know, obviously informed of all of this communication with all the boards because, you know, we have several avenues to potentially address this. However, I don't think John First was calling on you to act on this now before the planning board reviews, makes a recommendation to the village board. And then we, then we decide whether we want to roll the dice again.
Yeah.
I think it would be hard for the village board to die out because if they've already granted variances or waivers for other people, other places, how do you say yes? Especially it's all on Main Street. How could you say no, yes, no, yes?
Well, it depends on the number that you're asking for.
Well, hell, the restaurant's going to get how many? They're only asking for, which is going to be what, five or four?
Six.
Well, it depends on whether.
Yeah, depending on that, so, yeah, it's, it's a.
Yeah, and I think the, that's something that I hope to present to the village board because the planning board is, is leaning towards differentiating between business and residential use. However, the code doesn't differentiate as far as the park, parking waiver goes, whether they should be, you know, only favor retail or business uses, um, but that's something we're discussing.
Yeah, I think it's more of a discretionary issue at this point, when you get to that number of spaces that may be needed. And, and, and our board doesn't really act so much within discretion except for interpreting direct code provisions. But we really still don't exercise discretion per se, we, we interpret. So I, I think, you know, this multiple, I, I think if we, we handle this parking at all, we deal with the spaces, the one or two or three that we can say that we can actually deal with and grant the variances for those particular spaces.
For their sizes.
For their sizes, but not as to number.
Okay.
And then I would also just ask that if, if also possible to request a variance for the access for the third space, the one in tandem. So I'd be asking for variances for the sizes of the spaces and that's, so the one space in tandem could be considered.
These spaces.
Viable, that we have a variance for the access, direct access to the street.
Is that the fourth car here or?
No, well, the fourth car we are kind of striking from this.
Yeah, so we're talking about this car.
Correct.
Okay, that makes, that would.
Make sense, yeah.
So in, in terms of parking, it sounds like we seem to agree on what we're going to address in terms of it. Is A, the size of the parking spaces, which she has defined here, thank you again Karen. And the third space, which technically does not fit in our definition of a legal parking space. And she's requesting that we make, you know.
Creative variance.
Creative variance that would make that a, a, a considered spot.
Should we, should we number these spots for the record so we know which spot, what spots we're referring to?
Are they, she has them numbered here.
I don't know if they're numbered on the plan, but this is kind of what I'm referring to.
Yeah, so it's one, two, three.
Well, it's good that you have them numbered here, so we, we're going to keep this obviously and we'll mark the cars according.
You can mark them on the plan.
So the, the first car was deemed to be.
Are these going to be restricted parking spaces?
You wrote this, right?
These are within the garage on the property, so they're not on the street and they won't be restricted to.
But that means that nobody can park on the street near the garage.
Well, they can't now.
Yeah, now anyway.
They can't.
So, but there are two spots there, those won't be restricted to residents.
No.
There are two street, there are two street spots actually. By the stone wall.
Yeah.
These are, and four, these are inside.
These are inside the garage.
Yes.
But the two street.
As we discussed, we want to, for the side.
Where the house won't be.
They're inside the garage. These spots.
I know, you're referring to these on the street and those won't be affected.
Those probably, okay. They're going to be treated by the department.
Should we make that clear for the record?
Sure, so, um, Jane, Jane had asked if the two spaces which are, are designated on the street as public parking would be affected by this, they're not, they're not within this property. And so they would remain part of the parking on Depot Square as a public right of way, or however that's defined.
She was concerned about those, those public spots being.
Yeah.
Oh.
Effective.
Yeah, no.
So, um, and all of the parking that we're talking about is inside the garage.
How are you dealing with the tandems of the three and?
So that's what we're just discussing, this is going to be stricken from the application. This, we are asking for a variance for access because the parking space is your access to the street.
So that it could be a valid space. Moving there because there's only four parking spots instead of one, two for, two for.
Well.
But that's not, that's not our.
I mean, there'll be certain apartment, there'll be apartments of, a couple of, a couple or three apartments will have, will offer a parking space and the others won't.
Yeah, they can do that whatever they want.
On-street parking, I mean, there are a lot of apartments that are rented on Main Street that don't have, that don't have a parking.
My house doesn't have one.
Yeah.
You live on more Church Street, who has parking there? You're parking in your neighbor's porch.
I forgot about the barber shop.
All right, so. So the first thing we have to address is this here. Right?
Yes.
Lot coverage is first we have to agree on, then we have to go to that there.
Well, it's, it's, well setbacks, setbacks on coverage is all, at this point existed.
Okay.
Because we now define, because we now define lot coverage does not include part of lot.
Okay.
So, um, just in general, um, and I'm just trying to think in terms of technically, do we close public hearing? Do we keep public hearing open? I'm just trying to figure out what's going to be our best next steps to keep this, you know, moving forward and to see what, what we can get done tonight in a, in a reasonable time. Why would we keep it open?
I have a question about that, keeping it open. And I talked to the village attorney about this too, because in the event that we have a negative outcome with the planning board and we want to come back to you to include the number of space, the parking as a variance. It would have to be kept open, or he said we can reopen the public hearing, however, we would have to reissue notices.
Yeah, you'd have to re-notice it.
Um, so then we're pushing things back a couple of weeks. If we keep it open, would your board meet again in two weeks or?
I mean, technically we're supposed to, but it's all based on availability.
Right.
And we might, I mean, I, you don't want to re-notice it, but isn't it a lot better to keep it open?
I think it's better to keep it open.
Let's keep it open.
Because then we're talking two more weeks of publication.
Right, yeah, right, exactly, it would be delayed further.
As long as your client is not.
Well, you know, you think this were another Butterfield hospital application, but it's okay, we're plugging away and getting the hot stuff at a time.
It's just something that really you don't want to keep dragging on, but with the issues, I think it's probably proven that we do.
It's just the parking.
Right.
It's the talk, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's a, you know, it's a big, I mean, it's substantial.
Yeah. Um, the next meeting that we are scheduled to have is November the third.
I don't think I'll be here.
I won't be here either, I'm, I'm out of, I'm out.
I have a fun drive all day and night. Next three days, fourth and fifth.
That'd be another reason why I won't go to the barriers kind of thing.
So the, the following, the following would be the seventeenth, unless somebody can chair that meeting, um, I will not be here.
Well, I, I'll tell you what, I mean, Aaron, could you be here on the third, I'll be here on the third, I mean, I.
Yeah, I can be here.
All right.
As far as I know, I can be here on the third.
Well, depending on the time I got, like, fun drive.
Can I also ask you, I mean, do you think that this is something with the extent of the decisions we'll be making? If that, you know, would be closing and then making a decision, do you want most of the board here or?
Well, I, for, for a case like this, you know, technically, yeah, I would like most of the board here. I mean, I, because it's.
But at the same, but are we all on pretty much the same page as well?
I'm not seeing any, any strong feelings on, you know, through, through our discussions that any of us are, are like on, you know, one side of the fence to the other right now. I mean, I get a general.
I think you're all on the same page, yeah.
Yeah, I get a general consensus that, um, we just need to define what is needed, you know, and.
We should do a teleconference with you, that's all.
So, so at minimum, Aaron, I could be here with you on there.
I mean, we could, you know, but we need to keep, you know, public hearing open.
I'd be, I'd be, get out of my fun rate early, so I can be here.
Because we really can't sit and, and go through the criteria truly with the meeting still open, with the hearings still open.
That's right.
Right?
I agree.
Yeah, okay, and that's, that's, that's what I'm just trying to define in my head with those next steps.
Unless we know that the only issue, I, I mean, I don't see the reason going through it, I mean, you could begin it now as long as we know the only issue is parking. Because they're, you know, they're separable.
I think it's pretty clear the only issue is parking with the planning board, if that has bearing on your.
And planning board is meeting next week.
Right, correct.
If we do alternate, alternate days.
And the last thing is, I don't think going through all these, you know, each one of these variances is going to take a significant amount of time. I mean, they're fairly straightforward.
We're in a group defer. Right, I mean, basically, I mean, you know, in the decision, yes, I do have to address them individually.
Right.
You know, in the decision, but when we say criteria one, what's the impact on the environment? All these, all these variances, you know, we could say existing variances, the impacts are great, minimal, whatever we decide. The new variances are for the pergola or blah, blah, blah. We can lengthen and the parking variances, blah, blah, blah. So we could do like three big chunks, even within the decision, you know, not diff, you know, not say, well, the four foot variances, blah, blah, blah. And, you know, and within that we can say, well, the existing are, you know, they are substantial, but blah, 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 blah. So I think we, again, the decision we're going to have to, we do have to address. But in terms of our discussions and the criteria, I don't think we have to list them bullet by bullet by bullet by bullet. I think we can, you know, that we can look at them under the criteria in groups.
Okay, so I thought you were also bringing up whether or not you would want to go through some of them now.
Well, I don't, I don't think we can.
I don't think we can because we haven't closed the public hearing.
We haven't closed the, the public hearing and I, you know, because that we'd, I guess sort of deem, oh, we're, we're prejudging. And, and technically we don't want to put ourselves in that position of prejudging.
Besides that, I also felt like it wasn't going to take that long anyway, like you said in case, so there's no need to get.
To do it now.
Yeah, okay. So I, the general take on this is, is, you know, from the board and I think from the applicant is we're going to keep this public. is we're gonna keep this public hearing open, see how planning, um, deals with the parking, which will help us define, you know, that piece of the pie. The remaining pieces of the pie, I think, you know, I think we can, you know, at the next public hearing, we could, you know, cover a couple of outstanding points and then jump right into, you know, close the public hearing and do our criteria based on, you know, our thoughts and feelings. You know, just probably review, you know, a quick review of what those...
Well, but the planning board, the, the planning board, won't they decide when, whether it goes to the board trustees or not? So we're not, we're not, we still won't have a...
We won't...
Have an answer about the parking until, for some time.
You know, 'cause, so you may stay, you know, open-minded to this and maybe, uh, we may not have to meet here.
Right.
Is what you're saying.
What I'm saying is we may not, we may not be able to meet, there may not be a decision by, by November fifth.
Right, there might not be anything further to be said.
By November third.
So, but I, you, just to know, I'll be prepared to be here if Mary...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I can be here on the seventeenth, I just can't be here on the third, so that's...
And Mr. McDonald?
Just a question, wouldn't the planning board need to know if they're going to recommend, um, um, the, the village board issue a waiver? Wouldn't they need to know a count, and they won't know a count? Right now, the count is, would be a waiver for all the parking spaces because CBA hasn't granted a variance for any...
Well, it would be, it would be for six.
Well, that's already figured out.
It would be six.
Six.
And how we get, we're, we're gonna then formally advise the, of that, you know, reason? And I think that's in part what you're suggesting to let them know.
Well, I just, I just wondered about the count, you wouldn't know...
But I think Donald's right because we do have a request for variance on the, on the two spaces.
On the...
But maybe we should, maybe we should, can we make a recommendation that they...
Make a recommendation that they request a variant, there are a waiver for six?
Yeah, we, make a recommendation that we want them to, you know, um, grant the waiver.
Or you can at least, if, if not recommend, you can advise the board that, that, that there's a need for six.
Mm-hmm.
Under the circumstances, rather than recommending, I mean, that...
Yeah, we see there's a need for six.
Or, or five.
Or five, depending on if, if they're gonna accept a tandem.
Five.
Five.
Correct, and is it possible for this board to take a straw poll this night, tonight, just on the size of the parking spaces and the access so that those, that those three spaces could be...
Did, did it be some certainty to them being approved for variances?
Well, here's my...
Right, just so that that information, you, you know, I know that the boards communicate with one another if that information is something that you are leaning toward approving and that can be relayed to the planning board so that then they know that, you know, you're considering three viable spaces as exist, as pre-existing, but nothing beyond that.
I, I have a logistical issue about, about having three spaces, that inside space, because you could have, assuming there's no, it's vacant now, and you have tenant one comes in with one car, tenant two comes in with one car, tenant three comes in with one car. How are you gonna have, you know, the logistics of tenant three getting that inside space and getting access to it with tenant one on a different schedule and tenant, I, I, you know, or, or, I just don't understand how that will work.
Right.
It's not, you know, it's not really a viable solution for a tenant to say, I, you have parking, but you have, you have to deal with tenant number one to get...
Well, I think that's why we're scratching the fourth space, and I think the fact that by the code we're now saying we need two spaces per dwelling unit. So basically, we're saying we have two spaces for one dwelling unit, one space for a second dwelling unit, and no spaces for the other unit. So therefore, the two spaces are viable for one unit.
One unit.
And since the code is asking for two spaces per unit, that's the only reason why that third tenant's space.
Gotcha, I see it.
So, no, so in other words, if apartment four has two cars, they get one and two here.
Right, and then...
If they only have one, then that's something they have to work out, but at least we got it.
They've got, they've got both spaces.
They've got them, and they could...
I mean, this is just hypothetical, we can't tell them how to divvy up their space.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly, but if, but that's how they're, that's how they're gonna address it.
It also doesn't work.
You have two spaces, you have one, you have one, you have one.
Right, and that's, I think, only, the only reason why the planning board was, or one member of the planning board, Dave Marion, mentioned that it is realistic that one residence might have two spaces in tandem.
They might, so there you go, he's the guy who get, they're the people that's gonna get the two spaces, so that...
Yeah, that's all I have at my house.
That's all we can do.
I have two, I have two cars and...
In tandem, right.
In tandem, and because...
So that would make then again, of course, five, I mean, three viable spaces.
Right.
Right, three viable spaces, so here is for five.
Considering that one unit might have the first two that are, in fact, you know, to nose the front.
Exactly. So we just make the recommendation that they go with five, they request a, a waiver for five? That's, could be our recommendation?
Yeah, well, not a recommendation, it was advice, advice and advisement, you know, as to what we sound...
So we, how do we do that?
Mr. Donald?
I think you could use the wording that, um, even, the, 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 the public hearing has remained open, but the board, the sense of the board is that so far during the public hearing, we've heard nothing that would not rec, have us not recommend that whatever Elliot said.
Well, yeah, exactly.
You're acknowledging that you're leaving the public hearing open, but so far that the board has not heard anything in the course of the public hearing that would stop you from making this recommendation.
Right.
Hopefully it leaves you the escape hatch if somebody came in at the end of the public hearing and said, well, here's some major thing.
Well, here's something new that...
Exactly.
Yeah, you don't know.
But it does give a sense. It does give a sense of kind of where we're thinking.
Where we're going.
I mean...
But, but it's only talking as to those, like in this case, three spaces.
Right.
Right.
And that's what you're suggesting, we haven't heard anything that would prohibit us from granting variances to the three spaces and finding them to be viable.
Can we, can we have somebody make a motion, says, I make a motion that we make this recommendation? Is that which Paulie Donald?
It's, I think it would be a better advice.
Advise, advise the...
I make a motion that we advise, you know, if somebody, if...
I'll make the recommendation that we advise the planning board that we will, we will accept these, the three parking spaces and they request...
No, well, that's a little difference from what Donald says, that Donald was saying that, that we don't see anything that's been presented to the public hearing at this point that would prohibit us from, uh, finding these viable spaces, is that right?
Yeah, there's, you're acknowledging that it's, the, the course of the public hearing is remaining open, but that so far, the sense of the board is even nothing that would stop you from making the recommendation that whatever Elliot said.
Right, instead of it sounding, Elliot, instead of it sounding like we're making a vote on it.
Right.
Yeah, so they, so far, we've heard nothing, we've heard nothing that would, that would, that would lead us to not make the recommendation that they seek a waiver for five parking spaces.
You've, so that's...
I'll move that, yes, I move, I, let me try to say it again.
Say it one more time.
I move that we advise the planning board that we are keeping the public hearing open and that we are, but since, but that so far we have heard nothing in the public hearing that would, uh, prevent us or it would, that would, that, that lead, that would lead us not to recommend that the planning board seek a waiver, that the planning board advise the board of trustees that, that a waiver for five parking places is appropriate.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Uh, all in favor?
I...
Okay, so, um, I will try to draft something to the planning board to that decision, so that...
It's not decision, it's...
Or, uh, well, it's, well...
Advice.
Advice, but, you know, we, we came to a decision to advise.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I get it.
Yeah, resolved to advise.
We, we came to, so I will, uh, inform that, that we, we discussed this, we voted on it, this is our general feeling. But, you know, it's gonna remain open and we can always change our mind.
That's right.
You know, in, in a sense, in a sense.
Donald, come more often.
Thank you, Donald, for your advice.
Yes.
Thank you, Donald.
Well, about the six-foot fence, uh...
Uh, I have no minutes tonight because I've just like been to the wall.
Yeah.
So, uh, at this point, uh, we're keeping the public hearing open, we have no other business.
I want to adjourn.
Allison makes a motion to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Certainly.
I'll get seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.